Now 6:00 PM, if everyone will please rise. Counselor Lorenz will lead us into this evening in the place of a legal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nita, would you call role first, please? Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Schlebach?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Schrader?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
A quorum is declared. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda for this evening for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-402 for E concerning the city attorney. Second.
Any other discussion?
Just to clarify, that's a motion to go into executive session?
To amend the...
At the end of the meeting?
Yeah, to amend the agenda to go into session.
Any other discussion? Nita? Counselor Schlebach?
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Schrader?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Ms. Torres's fourth grade class. They are here this evening to present a play that they have put together on drug and alcohol prevention.
All right. I am Rachel Torres and I'm a fourth grade teacher at OS Elementary. About five or six months ago, Nancy Molina had come to me in one of the school districts and asked if I would be willing to help her with her program. She's with the RGPP, Rio Grand Prevention Program that started up. It's a prevention program to help prevent certain things in our community. There's other schools, districts that are involved, but our class in our district is the first class that actually went forth with a project like this. Our kiddos are only in fourth grade. This is the first time they've ever done anything like this, so it's kind of a great thing that we started up. So we wanted to share our hard work with you guys. I'm going to introduce my students that are here right now. There are others that couldn't be here, but they all participated. We have Alessa, Kiara, Quimeno, Dustin, Julian, Caleb, Jacob, Brayden, Eliana, Hunter, Riley, and Maya over here. These kiddos have worked very, very hard. We started as soon as Christmas break was over. They used... We only have about six Chromebooks in our classroom. Well, now we just purchased three more, but we only have six Chromebooks to work with throughout this whole project, which isn't a lot. And our school doesn't necessarily have the funds to get more, so we had to work with what we had. Let's see. A co... Or, let's see. So when we first started this, these kiddos, they don't usually do a research-based project like this. The most they've ever done is a research paper or something like that dealing with animals. So them actually looking things up, putting it on paper, then unfolding it out and putting it into a project like this was really amazing to see. And they got to learn more about the different subjects that we did. So we had alcohol and opioids, which is this little poster right here. We aren't necessarily talking about it, but you guys are more than welcome to come and take a look at it if you'd like. We had a group with tobacco. We had a group with marijuana. So I'm going to go ahead and let the kiddos take role. Like I said, everything that we have here is them. They did everything, whether it's the play, these notes, everything is them. So please enjoy.
Hi, my name is Lyska, and today we are going to be presenting a lot of research on a lot of things, including alcohol and drugs.
Please enjoy.
Hi, I'm Jacob.
I'm Dustin. We're going to teach you about marijuana. Do you know it's also called cannabis?
It comes from a plant called cannabis.
There are more... There are more than 500 chemicals in marijuana.
One of those chemicals is known as THC.
THC alters someone's mind.
Did you know that the amount of THC has increased over the years?
People use marijuana by smoking it.
I...
Things like cookies and even oils. But how can it affect your brain?
Vessels pass through the lungs, then into the blood, then through the body's organs, like the brain. Symptoms start right away and last up to one to three hours. Some symptoms are bad decision making.
Concentration...
Concentration? Memory and brain development. Here is a picture showing a user versus a non-user. This is the non-users, and this is a cannabis user, which is marijuana. And the difference is that up here on the brain is darker than a non-users.
All right. Before the play gets started, I'm going to have a couple of kiddos handing out some brochures. There's one brochure that they made themselves. Another brochure is from Nancy Molina and the prevention program. So these kiddos are going to get up. No, they are their kiddo stuff.
Thank you for joining us today. All 21st students from Mrs. Torres' fourth grade class have spent a lot of time and hard work researching and preparing our projects on marijuana, marijuana, alcohol, opioids, and tobacco, and the negative effects they have on users' bodies, including their brain. My friends and I were split into different groups today. The difference was to inform you about the harmful substances. Right now, we're going to present a short play based on our research on tobacco. Please enjoy.
On regular morning, the morning before school, there is a group of students standing at the bus stop, and there is something that sparked a very informative conversation.
You haven't studied for a math test today?
Yes, I have a little bit of a study back. Both the tests are in two hours.
Yeah, me too.
Only a couple of months of marijuana and several grades.
Hey, guys, did you study for your math test today? I totally forgot.
Even... I don't care, because even when I don't study, I always get first.
Uh...
The lab? You look, somebody left a cigarette on the ground.
Caleb, don't touch that glass, there'll be germs on it.
Oh, okay. I'll put it in the trash.
You, he touched it. He touched it. Cigarettes are bad for you.
Yeah, they're bad.
Yeah, tobacco, it just... You smoke cigarettes, they cause many different diseases. Microphone diseases.
My mom said that if you're by someone that smokes, you could get harm from it, too.
This guy is called the Kinsfolk. That's why businesses don't let employees or people smoke inside it.
Oh, good thing we have an access, not a house, because I would hope to fill up.
All right. So as you can see, they worked very hard on this. This is a big project that they put together all by themselves. I have a few questions for them, so you can actually see the type of work that they did and what they actually learned from this experience. So one of the questions that I have for you guys is, how has this project impacted you? Let's go with Jacob.
It impacted me. We could... We got to learn about marijuana and other stuff like that, and we got to mute our friends and every stuff like that. So we were bonding at the same time.
Okay. Why did we do this project? Riley?
To inform people that don't know about it, to inform them what it does to users' minds.
Okay, good. And what is one of your... What was one of the most favorite parts that you guys had while you were doing this?
My favorite part was when we were researching, we got to write it down, and then we got to make our... The switch that we handed out to them.
Okay, so the brochures. Those were really cool, yeah. So one of the things that I wanted to share with you guys is, not only did they do all this work, but they also presented it at two other places. We presented at the... With the RGPP Board about almost a month ago, and we also presented at the School Board, which is a really big meeting, so they were a lot... They were really nervous, and now we presented with you guys. So they've done an awesome job, and thank you for letting us share our hard work. Thank you.
Okay. Before we continue on with our citizens' comments and special presentations, we do have a housekeeping item we need to go back to. We made a modification to our agenda this evening by adding the executive session. However, we still need approval on the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita? Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Schrader?
Aye.
Counselor Schlebach?
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Back to citizens' comments and special presentations. We have Mariana King with us this evening to talk about economic development.
Thanks for this opportunity. I'm qualified to speak about economic development and the consequences of poverty because I've been an economic development consultant for 25 years, and in the past 12 years in the Valley, I've generated millions of dollars of funding. As you probably know, the San Luis Valley is the most impoverished region in Colorado, and in recent years, violent crime and substance abuse has increased. This is directly connected to poverty and lack of economic development. And I speak as an authority. I'm a sociologist. I teach at CSU Pueblo, and so I understand very well the connection between lack of jobs, lack of economic development, poverty, and crime. In December, my house was burglarized, and I live in... On Dunham, which is a fairly low burglary area in town. So close to $1,000 was stolen. My insurance did not cover that. I have a $1,000 limit. Two weeks later, there was a home invasion on Morris Street, and then about three weeks after that, there was a drug bust about two blocks south of me. This is directly related to the lack of economic development. At least one city council person has said that economic development is not the responsibility of the city council. However, this is incorrect. The mission of the Manavista City Council is to provide and maintain infrastructure, facilities, and services that ensure the health, safety, and welfare for all residents and visitors. So I'm here to tell you that you're not doing your job. At least two council members ran on a ticket of economic development. I haven't seen very much happen. The Manavista is getting uglier all the time with abandoned houses, abandoned storefronts, and more crime, especially in the southern part of town. So I'm here to find out what the city council is doing for economic development. And I was motivated in part to make a presentation to you because in the past year or so, at least half a dozen residents of Manavista, in conversations with me, have said, "Manavista is dying." "Manavista is a dying town. Our town is dying." I talked to Carol Schrader about the need for economic development, and she pointed out that the city cannot afford an economic development director. However, there are ways to address this. One way is to apply for money, and the project director in effect would be an economic development director. Forrest mentioned to me that he thinks it would be a good idea for Manavista to become a retirement community because there's a lot of infrastructure here. There's recreation. It's close, you know, fairly close to other large cities, and there's lots of medical facilities. I think it's a brilliant idea to think in terms of Manavista becoming a retirement community. Also, there is a lot of money available for what's called heritage tourism. There's private foundation money, Department of Local Affairs money, state money, and federal money, especially from the U.S. Department of Commerce. So I don't... There's no reason why the city council should not be more actively engaged in economic development in order to adequately fulfill your mission. What I would suggest is that the city council work with the Chamber of Commerce. They're very happy to be able to work with you. Also, the Manavista Economic Development Corporation wants to work with the city council and the chamber to promote economic development. Charlie Spielman is having cataract surgery, so he's not able to be here today. I wrote a rural business development grant for the chamber in January. I've maintained a 92% success rate in the grants that I've written. I had talked to Forrest about hiring me as a grant writer to help along with things, but I was told that the city council was not interested in retaining a grant writer. I'm not here to ask for a job. I have plenty of work. But I am here to remind you of your responsibility and the consequences and repercussions of your not fulfilling your responsibility. The town is dying economically, but also socially and in terms of crime. It's ludicrous that my house is burglarized and that just two weeks later, there is a home invasion. We got what's called a reverse 9/11 call, and we all had to turn our porch lights on, and it was frightening. So I suggest that the chamber think seriously about heritage tourism, applying for a lot of money that's available, and putting that money to work. And what I would like to do is come back in four weeks and come and make another appearance here to see what the city council has decided to do to address this problem. And in the meantime, I would like to know now what the city is doing to promote the economy and the well-being and the welfare of the residents of the city of Manavista.
Well, you know, we do have recognized the economic situation here in town, and it's something that has not... Is not just within the last four years. This has been a trend, you know, that has been going on just nationwide with the drop in economic development, businesses leaving, smaller mom and pop shops getting put out of business, and something that we have taken... We take it very seriously and things that we're putting in place in order to try to combat that are, one, we have our economic incentive policy that we've done a better job in the last two years to be able to push out to new business owners to come in to be able to see what we can do to help out on the city's end with property taxes, with city utilities and things like that, to be more incentivizing for new businesses to come in and prosper here in the city. Unfortunately, we've only had one business that's taken advantage of that today. Some of the other things that we've been doing is hosting economic summits, both as on the city level for our local business owners, but as well as community. And we brought in Frank Gray. He's the head economic developer for Castle Rock. He's got Castle Rock to where they are at today by doing what he's doing, and he's coming in and trying to show us what we need to do, what are the changes we need to make, and how we need to address this problem. Unfortunately, though, it doesn't happen overnight, and I think while we're doing better than what we were at five years ago, I don't... We're nowhere near where we would like to be, so we're continuing to take the strides that we need to. And we're also have one of our city employees that has been doing outreach to the business owners and potential business owners here in the city and trying to find out from them what's going on, what's wrong, what can the city do to help you out to be more prosperous, to be able to be successful in what you're doing. And, you know, again, I think we're making better progress than what we've had before, but I don't... It's not anywhere where we would like it to be. But it's not something that we're backing off of, definitely. We have continued to push efforts and resources to be able to get that because it is a big issue. I would like to see the buildings downtown filled with businesses. I'd like to see people shopping and utilizing Manavista for what it was about 20 years ago, but it takes time. And so, you know, we're definitely open to suggestions. I don't think we've ever shot anyone down saying, "Hey, would you guys be willing to try this or try that?" We're working on... When you spoke of the Chamber of Commerce, that's something that we have been working to develop a better relationship with them. We're having our monthly meetings with them. We're starting that. We're supposed to start this month. We're going to start next month and trying to plan out and figure out what we can do together and partner up to do that. We're also working with Frank Gray to talk about a bigger economic umbrella, working with the URGDC, and him to develop not only a pitch plan, but to be able to combine resources to be able to get infrastructure needs that need to be addressed in the Valley as a whole, not just Manavista.
How much funding has the city applied for in terms of economic development in the past two years? What grants have you submitted to promote economic development?
We have been working for two and a half years on an urban renewal grant that we have formally signed and are waiting for the release of funds. As Counselor Martinez expressed, these things unfortunately do not happen overnight. We have identified 50-plus lighted properties in our community. We have had to have those properties... We've had to hire a historical archaeologist to verify those properties have not... Are not of any historical significance. We've had to clear them through the flood plain, through... So we have jumped through lots of hoops to get this $625,000 grant to address these abandoned and abated properties. That... I'm not sure exactly when we're expecting those funds, but, you know, we're... That contract has been signed. So there is more to economic development than just opening up a business downtown. It's infrastructure. We unfortunately had to raise our city water and sewer rates because we have aging infrastructure that needs upgraded. If a large manufacturer were to come in here tomorrow, we don't have the adequate infrastructure to meet their needs. So we have to start from the foundation up. So we are addressing our infrastructure. We are also trying to bring in broadband through CLO and SLVREC. Those are the needs that today's businesses are looking for and need. So it's not just about the vacant buildings downtown. It's infrastructure. It's...
I understand what... I understand what... Yes, I understand what economic development is.
And so I guess my question to you and the community is, what are you doing for economic development? Because if we don't support those local businesses downtown, they go away.
Well, I volunteered...
And it's not the city. I mean, if you... If the taxpayers want the city to support businesses, are you wanting us to pay for city employees to go get their hair done, to go out to dinner?
I'd like to answer... I'd like to answer your question. I'd like to answer your question without the sarcasm.
I'm not being sarcastic. I'm saying it's the city. City being the city limits, the people in the city supporting those businesses and supporting their local businesses. That's economic development.
I volunteered to be on the Urban Renewal Commission, and at the same time, I was talking to Forrest about possibly writing grants for the city, and he got back to me and said, "Well, it'd be a conflict..." The city council said it'd be a conflict of interest for you to be on the Urban Renewal Committee because we're considering hiring you as a grant writer." And then I heard nothing else after that. And that was, I think, three or four years ago. So yes, it does take time, but it's taking too much time. And apparently, from what you said, Debbie, that the council does believe, or most of you believe, that economic development is part of the city council's responsibility. But I'm very concerned about crime. I'm very concerned about substance abuse. You know, we saw the children who are, you know, subject to this poverty. I'm unconvinced that the city is really proactive. It's taking too long. And again, my question is, other than urban renewal to get rid of the blight, what funds have you applied for to help downtown businesses? There's hundreds of thousands of dollars. You can apply to the U.S. Department of Commerce for $500,000 for a three-year project. And I related this to Forrest. I'm not faulting him. I think that he's... I think that he's proactive, and his idea of turning Manavista into a retirement community is a brilliant idea. You're not doing enough, and you're not moving quickly enough. And the crime, the increase of crime in the community is an indicator of the need for more economic development. And I understand what you're saying. I hear you. You seem to be a little bit defensive, and maybe you should be a little bit defensive because I really contend that you're not doing your job adequately enough. And people I've talked to have voluntarily told me, "Manavista is dying." And that's a very powerful statement. Those are not my words. Over half a dozen people with whom I've spoken have said that. "Manavista is dying." And what I'd like to do is come back in four weeks and get more of an idea of what you're doing concretely to apply for funding to help bring in businesses and to help bolster the existing businesses that are struggling.
Ma'am, in the last year, just off the top of my head, I can tell you that we've brought in over $3 million in grants. Now, there are more grants out there. I'm not quite sure what the concrete number is. We have a bill... We have a GoCo grant that's $350,000. We also
For what?
$600,000 grant for the Urban Renewal Authority.
The $350,000 is for business development and economic development? This is peripheral. It's important to clean up the blight to make the Montevista more attractive. It used to be the jewel of the valley. And now, like I said, it's getting uglier and uglier and it's not attractive to new businesses. So I understand, so I understand, I understand the importance
$350,000 was for community development?
Excuse me, excuse me. Please let me finish. So I understand the need for urban renewal as part of the basis to boost economic development.
The $350,000, as I was saying, is for community development. Trying to find exactly where it was at. It was a GoCo grant to support recreation, which essentially, if you look at recreation within Colorado, has expanded exponentially over the past five years and is expected to double to triple in the next five years. What that will do is that will bring people into a community. What we know about people is when we bring people into the community, economic development follows, economic growth follows. And so, while we're currently working on economic development, and if you understand anything about a governmental entity, governmental is much slower process than private is. If you're working outside for a private entity, yeah, you can move right along, you can get things done. But within the government, there are certain rules and procedures that we have to follow that takes more time. Now, if you take a look at from 2011 to 2015, the crime rate in Montevista has dropped by half. And those are statistics straight from our police department. And so while the rest of the valley has increased, has had an increased spike in crime, Montevista has seen that crime go down. Now, I apologize. I'm sorry that you had to experience a break-in. I experienced a break-in myself. I had several thousand dollars' worth of property stolen out of my car. So I understand what you're saying. It's not a good thing. We don't like it. And we have made great strides in improving it. We've come a long ways. There's a long ways to go and we recognize that. And we will continue to move in that direction because we do care about the community. We didn't get involved because we wanted to sit here and thumb our noses at the city of Montevista and the community and our fellow
And I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that you have done that.
But we've put a tremendous amount of effort into building this community and we've seen that in businesses coming in. We've seen that we've had more businesses come in than leave in the past two years. We're growing. We're going somewhere. We're not dying. We're not even remotely dying. We're growing. And as we continue to grow, we're going to see this community continue to become better and better. It is a process. It takes patience. It takes community involvement. It takes people showing up to the city council and participating, not once or twice a year, but regularly, to continue to improve things. That's what we need. While we work for you, we ask that you help us.
Well, that's why I'm here. But still, you have not answered my question about how many, how much funding have you applied for to promote business development? And you have not. So my suggestion is that you really consider the idea of heritage tourism. People are enchanted with the idea of a small western town. People in Japan would be attracted. People from Europe are, like I said, entranced with the idea, the romance of the small western town. And that's a basic resource that Montevista has, heritage tourism. So I really encourage you to consider applying for big bucks in federal money to bring in businesses, to build up the downtown, to make it more of a heritage destination place, which is very doable. And I haven't heard anybody say that you have actually done that. So I really recommend that. And like I said, I'll be back in four weeks to see what kind of progress you've made in terms of applying for funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now is the time for any unscheduled comments. If you would like to address counsel, we ask you to please come up to the podium, state your name for the record. Please keep in mind that we cannot make any formal action on any citizen's comments. If there's anyone this evening that would like to speak? Do you want to?
My name is Jim Clare and I'm here representing Montevista Chamber of Commerce and CDC. I'm going to present a project and I have given out the information prior. And what this is, is a banner station project that we're looking at. And if you go through your information, you can see some of the banners that we took pictures of, that people put up each end of town when we have an event going on. And what the Chamber and CDC would like to do is propose a banner station project at each end of town. What we've done is we've talked to San Luis Valley Real Electric and they're wanting to do a community project and work with us on this project also. And what I'll do is just present it this evening and give you time to look at it. I briefly mentioned it to Mr. Vance and Forrest some time back. It's taken us a little bit of time to kind of get loose ends together and give you a formal presentation. So at this time, what I want to just do is go through the packet that's in front of you. And as you can see, there's just an opening letter there that describes what we're looking at, what we're talking about. And after that, we go into associated cost with the banner stations. And then we also go into an itemized cost, which shows the total cost, how it's going to be split out between San Luis Valley Real Electric and the Chamber, CDC, and various civic groups that want to donate to this project. Along with that, there's also the letter included from San Luis Valley Real Electric, Michelle Trujillo, that does state that the San Luis Valley Real Electric is interested in this project. As I mentioned, there's several pictures in there that show kind of what happens with our banners when we put them up in the locations and stuff. So just to make that a little more aesthetic and a little more reasonable, doable for people that are promoting the events, we'd like to go ahead and promote this project. As you can see further on back, there's a simple drawing of what we're looking at. What we're looking at is placing two poles at each end of town to form a banner station. We've got all the hardware and everything listed. The poles would be a pole from the San Luis Valley Real Electric, which would be a Western Red Cedar, fully treated. And there wouldn't be danger of anything rotten at that time. So along with that, we've also given you a couple of photos of hopefully what it'll look like once we do get it in place, get the project going. And hopefully it'll be more accommodating for people with events and with banners that are going to be showing what's going on in the town of Montevista. So at this time, I would just like to present this to the chamber for consideration and possibly get back to me whenever possible. At that time, I'll get back with San Luis Valley Real Electric and also associated groups that have an interest in this project. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think it's a great idea.
Are there any questions?
How soon would you be looking at trying to implement this, like ASAP? Or are you?
Yes, as soon as possible because we have enough funding in place and everything situated where we could probably go ahead and do it. San Luis Valley Real Electric, as a matter of fact, I talked to Michelle this afternoon and she wants me to get back to her as soon as possible because it's a community project with their new committee. And they've already put this on their agenda as something to do. And so they're just kind of waiting to see where we're at and where we come up with this. And all the events coming up this summer, I think it'd be a good opportunity to get it up as soon as possible and promote the banners and stuff.
I'm impressed with the fundraising that's been done here. Trying to make sure my math is correct, the way that I read it, you're about 640 short right now?
Approximately, yeah. And like I said, we've had several other groups that have had an interest. But the thing was, we didn't want to go ahead and move forward on that portion of it until we had more of a convincing project and we could move forward with it. And I don't think the funding will be a problem, securing the rest of the funding. Like I said, we have several other groups that are definitely interested in it.
Absolutely. I really appreciate you doing this. I think it's a really great idea to just add, like you said, the aesthetics of it.
Well, I know there might be a few logistics that you may want to talk about, especially with Rob on locations and stuff like that. The one thing that we have looked at is it's not permanent signage. It's just going to be temporary with your banners and stuff. And already you can see the concerns we have with what's been done in the past. We just want to clean it up and make it a little more aesthetic and a little more pleasing for people coming into town and stuff, so.
Just a quick question, Jim. So if, let's say, a committee was putting on an event and they wanted to use the sign, would they contact the Chamber and CDC at the information center? And would they be given the dimensions of the sign for them to purchase it? Or how do you guys see that working?
What we're going to do is the spacing on the eye bolts is going to be four foot apart. So basically, you can come with any width. The distance is we're still kind of trying to determine that whether it's going to be 12 foot or 15 foot. A lot of the banners come out at eight foot, so that gives you plenty of room on the end. So that's one thing that we want to verify before we put the poles in place. As far as using it, I think it'd probably be up to the city for people to come to the city to request that proposal, to be able to use it. I don't know how it's being done now with the trees and fence and stuff, but
Citizens just call.
I was, I was going to say, every event I've been a part of, you just get a ladder and go hook up the trees.
Well, I think with this option, it'd be a little more organized, hopefully, and there'd be a little more detail to it. So it'd be something that I think, you know, the city could kind of oversee and take care of. And I don't think it'd be that big of a deal, so.
No, I was, yeah, I was just, I was curious about, yeah, seeing kind of overseeing it.
Yeah, and once again, the communication going on between the city and the chamber, you know, we're working on that, improving that. So it could be something, if somebody comes to us, we refer you to, refer them to the city and communication and stuff like that. So I think that's going to work real well. You know, the last meetings we had with Rob in there, things have been real good and we see some good strides in the future as far as that, so. Okay?
Do you have any locations in mind?
No, we're going to leave that up to Rob and let him scope stuff out and kind of see what we come up with. You know, there's some options and some stuff that we'll probably have to look at as far as right-of-way and stuff like that, being within certain areas and utilities, stuff like that. We'll have to address that situation.
We'll also have to tuck the seed up to make sure we get their blessings or put it on ground property.
Yeah. And that's one of the things we've kind of checked in the past is since it's a temporary, hopefully that'll be, they're doing a similar project in South Fork.
They're going all the way across the highway.
Yeah, a little bit different, so, so it's something. But I think we can come up with some answers on that. Okay?
All right. Well, we're looking forward to it.
Okay, and any other questions? Okay. And just get back to me whenever, through Rob or whoever, through the chamber or whatever, and we'll just wait to hear back from you folks.
We'll just put it a formal decision, we'll put that on the next council agenda.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to? Okay, moving on to ordinances. We have ordinance 880 on a first reading revising, repealing, and replacing our municipal code section 5-1-300 on drug houses and illegal activity. So I don't know if there's anything you want to explain, Karen, about the revision on the ordinance or?
Other than what I sent to counsel with my memo? And if there's any further questions on it, I revised it.
Any questions for Karen on it? Okay, so which is the counsel?
I move to approve ordinance number 880, section 5-1-300 on ordinance repealing and replacing municipal code section 5-1-300, drug houses and illegal activity on first reading.
Any other discussion? Nita?
Counselor Schreder?
Aye.
Counselor Schlebach?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is our intergovernmental agreement with Rio Grande County Sheriff's Office regarding the jail. Which is the counsel. Counsel?
I would just like to let you know that between myself and Chief Lopez and Karen, that we have done our due diligence to meet with the sheriff and Lieutenant Beecham at the jail to compile all this information. If you approve this tonight, then myself and Chief Lopez will take it to counsel with Sheriff Brian Norton and present it to the county commissioners for Rio Grande County. The old one expired on December 31st, so we have been under no contract with Rio Grande County up until now, so.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the IGA for Rio Grande County Sheriff's Office.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita?
Counselor Schlebach?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Counselor Schreder?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Okay, next item is the updated contract with Connor Animal Shelter for our services.
So before counsel tonight is the updated contract for animal shelter services for animals that our code enforcement pick up and take to their shelter for city. It is, includes a change as far as what we, what we pay them on a monthly basis that has been figured into the budget discussions that we've talked about. Heather met with Michelle over at the shelter and really worked through all the details and the financials. And Heather feels that it is a fair cost. Their average cost is about $22 a day per dog that's brought to them. We've increased that. We're averaging about 17 dogs a day, or a month, excuse me, month. So they are happy with the contract. They have already pre-authorized and signed the contract. So if it is sufficient to counsel, answer any questions you might have.
So, forgive me for asking this, but the way I understand it, it used to be $1,800 a month is what we
$1,250.
$1,250?
$1,250. It's, it's a doubling.
Okay.
Now, we've increased.
From what I was looking at, if, you know, she was saying that it's about $22 a day for a dog. If what she's saying, that we have 17 dogs a month, it should be about $8,000 a month. And so I think it's fair to pay them that much and it still helps us. So that was why I recommended that we do it.
And you said it's already been figured into the budget for?
Yes.
The redo. The redo is, yes.
Motion to approve the Connor Animal Shelter.
Second.
Any other discussion? Nita?
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Counselor Schreder?
Aye.
Counselor Schlebach?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
I'm not going to go very far.
All right, next item on the agenda is to approve the financial report for April. I think it's financials. Does that need a motion?
So Rob and I have been working on, well, we just spent two and a half hours looking at budget stuff. And so we'll present that to you guys next month when we have our work session. But there was nothing really significant to report as of April, I think, so. If you guys have any questions, I think we went over a lot of stuff on Tuesday, so.
All right, moving on to the city manager's report. All right, moving on to the city manager's report.
You probably noticed, I did not submit a written report this time.
I think you've been a little busy.
Well, actually, up until recently, it was fairly, there was not a whole lot newsworthy. So I don't know if it's unfortunate or not, but a lot of things have transpired over the last day. So I'll talk about the first thing, the county. Ronnie Wisdom, the administrator for Rio Grande County, contacted me. They've decided to go ahead and pursue a grant through DOLA for the Rural Economic Development Initiative to try to help our Veterans Waste Water Plant do a planning study on it so we can determine how we can make that building operate for 365 days a year. It would help proximity malt. The grant is here, just got it off the email. It needs to be submitted by May 28th and they were wondering if council would do a letter of support. So if council would agree to that, I will draft that letter tomorrow and have Debbie sign it and get that back over to Ronnie. So we'll do that. Also tonight, this afternoon, got notice for a water efficiency grant. I got the official letter that the Colorado Water Conservancy Board is pleased to award the city of Montevista a grant to the amount of $31,000 for a water conservation planning grant. That meets the requirements outlined in Senate Bill 07008 and the actual purchase order to start receiving those funds. So that's moved forward. And that's really the two big topics that kind of have come up that are newsworthy. So we are continuing to move forward with those. All right. Any questions?
City attorney's report.
Everybody, my report's pretty short. You got the ordinance that we redrafted for the drug houses. Hopefully that'll give the police department another tool in their arsenal. And also, it doesn't prevent us from pursuing civil forfeiture. That, that will be done in district court. I did forward you the penalty ordinance that we've discussed, but that's not on the agenda. I'm just waiting. And then I've been working with Judge Powell on, on some of our ideas for alternative sentencing. It's, I've been out. Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Is there anything on public works you'd like to report?
Oh, actually, yes. Come back up.
Besides that, we have the best one in the world in the business.
We have the highly overpaid one. You had two reports. The cleanup days went really well. We surpassed all other years as far as the amount of dumpsters that we took out or waste management took out. So cleanup days is going really well. We did lose our park specialist, so everybody has been kind of filling in the gaps. I've been mowing the water and sewer once they finished their meter reeds, kind of picked that up and I ran with it, trying to get everything so it continues to look forward. And we're good. Our seasonals are going to start next week, so we'll be able to keep up and get these little things mowed too. So we're going to, we're going to continue to move forward. One of the things I'd like to note in Baba Bada's report to council was the Henderson Lagoon and the chronic testing. Just, so I think he outlined what that actually does and what that is. But we did have a violation. Doesn't necessarily cost us any money as far as a violation to that. But as far as for the audience, we are required under our wastewater to go ahead and do certain tests. And the test that we have to do on an annual basis is called the wet test. These are chronic tests where they actually introduce organisms into our wastewater stream and to see what the effects are. There's two, one, there's a flathead minnow and then a delphi, which is kind of like a flea organism. We had the flea organism that did not meet or pass the test. So now we, as a city, are going to have to redo those tests. We have to get two passing tests where those organisms stay alive. So that's, that's where it is. The cause of that is with the lagoon system is primarily for the spring turnover. You know, temperatures warm up, that cold water then turns over and comes up to the top and that's what we believe caused it. It's happened about six years ago, same thing. Now the temperatures, other than today, when they kind of even out, then we should be okay. But just so you know, if that causes any concerns with you or what's going on. But other than that, veteran plants getting ready to go, proximity think that they probably won't start discharging until the middle of June, which means by the time they fill their holding tank or their holding pond, they won't actually probably discharge to us until probably late July, early August. So we'll have to see what those do, but that's, it's a little later than what you guys have been led to believe, so.
Thank you. Chief Lopez?
Someone's getting away is behind on the reports. This one's for April. We had three reported burglaries, 13 thefts. That's usually pretty, right, about 10 to 15 thefts, all the misdemeanor theft to shopliftings. We had five total drug cases and two of the five were distribution cases. We had 124 citations issued for the month of April and 105 reports taken. We had 1,019 calls for service, recorded the dispatch. Under officers, I just lost an officer to Douglas County, Officer Weiss. He's up from Metro and his family's from up there, so he hadn't been looking to getting up there, but he went up there sooner than he thought. So we'll be testing here as soon as he places his position and hopefully bring a couple of part-time officers to help us out. The good thing on that is we have eight applicants that just came in. Hopefully there might be some more. The Post Academy, the Police Academy in Elmo's have just finished up, so there's going to probably be a lot of applicants or certified officers looking for work now. Again, the lateral academy for state patrol is going to finish up this week. There's been a lot of interest from local law enforcement for that. I know they're down quite a bit of officers too. I know that I have like three or four that applied for the lateral here out of their office. And two of them, two of them are actually in background phases from a test they took a year ago, so. Once, just a quick reminder on that, is once that process starts up for the lateral academy, if officers are doing really good, as soon as they could go to the academy all at once, it'd be like September. So if they do good, and not just us, but any of the officers in the valley could be leaving as soon as August. We did some community police events. Officer Pino did bicycle safety class for the middle school or marsh kids and he had to do like a coloring contest, so he entered him into like a one winner per class. I think he was going to see if he could get some kind of a prize or a free movie night or something like that. So he was doing that. They liked it. The Easter egg hunt went really well again. We had the Easter bunny come in and lights and silence with the charger and then he took pictures with the kids. So that was fun. And then we did a couple of station tours for the second graders. And then I had the kitten and mouse do a demonstration with, for the kids. And she pressed this little button, the door popped open and the dog jumped out. She's kind of like unpredictable. They wanted to touch her and we didn't let them like pet her or anything like that. We took out some dummy drugs that we went and hid in a bunch of cars throughout the building. And only one kid knew where the drugs were at. And then the other kids, I kind of just gassed. And then we told the dog to go find the drugs and we followed her around and she found every single drug. So they were kind of impressed on how that worked. So they got to see a demo on that. Then afterwards, they all took a group picture with the dog and officers. And other than that, everything's day to day. Any questions for me?
I was wondering about the most recent report from your office about citations given. And I noticed there was not one citation given for speeding last week. Why?
I don't know. I'll look into that. I do know that most of them come from Officer Pino and White Ball. And if there wasn't as many, they've been week-long trainees lately. So hopefully after this week, they'll be out of training.
Okay.
That's the only thing I can think of right off the top of my head.
Has Officer Weiss left already?
He left. He started up there on Monday.
On Monday, okay. I'm sorry to see him go. He was a good officer.
He was.
But he still has to do what's, what's good for him, so.
Right.
I wish him luck up there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. City clerk's report. I don't have a whole lot to report on right now. Still working with Ezra on getting together information so we can look at our fee schedule. We're going to look at redoing that. At the department head meeting this morning, we talked about the department's also letting me know if they have fees that they would like to have changed and we'll make sure that those meet state statute and the guidelines. The only other thing I've been working on is I've created a new application for our security guards. The current application that we had did not follow our policies and procedures. So I went ahead and followed our ordinances and put together a new application. I did have the first application go out to the security company for Stampede and was thanked for putting it together in a way that they know exactly how to follow the procedures.